Christina. I'm calling this meeting to order. It is June 11th, Wednesday. This is an unusual time of day for one of these meetings. Thank you, everyone, for your flexibility in shifting it around so we could accommodate everyone's graduation needs. Do I have a motion to establish the agenda as posted? All in favor of establishing the agenda as posted, please say aye, students.
Aye.
Or student. And board members? Yeah, of course. Board members?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, well, the agenda is established as posted. We're starting out with public input, which is unusual, but that way it could be scheduled at a specific time, so. Do you have people sign up for public input?
We do. We have five people scheduled.
Oh, great. Okay, sorry. Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll read the thing. School board meetings are business meetings of the Mercer Island School District Board of Directors, public and public. The board recognizes the value of the public being able to observe these meetings and to provide comment within the following guidelines. Public comment is an opportunity for community members to provide input to and feedback on the work of the board and the district. It is not a time for dialogue between the board and the public. Board directors do not respond directly to questions or comments posed during public comment. However, the board's silence should not be taken as agreement or disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The board may later request superintendent to respond to issues raised during public comment. Members of the public offering comment must adhere to the same level of civility that the board expects of itself as specified in board policies. This includes not using threatening or profane language in comments and not directing individual attacks against staff, students, administrators, or board members. Please note that comments have the potential to violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. Comments that name or identify a district student are not permitted without permission of that student's parent or guardian. Speakers who violate any of these rules will be caught off and their speaking time ended. Speakers should state their full name for the record at the start of their comment and are encouraged to indicate their relationship to the district. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to comment and additional time if using an interpreter. If you are present in person at tonight's meeting, wish to make a comment, and have not yet completed a public input form, please complete the form and give it to Michelle Neiller. Blank forms are available at the entrance to the boardroom. Cut-off register for online public comment was one hour before the start of the meeting. Thank you. Our first public inputter is Shayne Smith-Cutright.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for welcoming us to this month's school board meeting. I'm Shayne Smith-Cutright, and we are representing the community at Crest Learning Center, Mercer Island's high school alternative learning program located just next door. We are concerned about the changes to programs and teaching staff at Crest for next year. We came here to express our concerns about these budget cuts as students who have significantly benefited from the alternative learning environment that Crest provides. We hope to help keep the program as it has been for years and hopefully for years to come. First of all, I would like to address the layout of Crest classes. In all classes, we had pair educators, and in Crest Block, there are two teachers for English and History respectively. In this structure, classes are handled well with an order that meets students' needs and helps them get the support they need quicker than in classes at main campus. Because we have more adults in the room and classes are smaller, it is more controlled for on-task work. This ensures lower noise levels to minimize sensory concerns for students who struggle with these issues, which according to UC San Francisco affects 6% to 15% of school-age students. It is also worth noting that these classes at Crest have been an amazing solution for students who need alternative learning where they feel supported in their endeavors. Also, we are moving funding for marginalized students. About 56% of students who take classes at Crest have IEPs and 504s, and on average, 91% of students, who I sent a survey, have reported receiving more support at Crest on regards to IEP and 504 goals compared to main campus. Students of us need more attention by nature, and when teachers and periods are dropped from our program, it can create problems. Several teachers and periods from Crest will drive students away and take away and support these students signed up for when they apply for this program. Lastly, this program has changed lives, including mine. Many students come here to get attention for their specialized education as well as IEP and 504 goals. In middle school, while I did have an IEP manager, I didn't have as much personalized education for it. The Crest program does this well by incorporating IEP and 504 goals and requirements into the block class on a regular basis. My experience here has been nothing but positive because of the extra teaching staff and the attention to detail that every staff member has at Crest. If this program didn't exist, with the people and classes it has, I wouldn't be who I am today. I would not have the confidence or self-FPC to present to you all as I am doing right now. With all that said, thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our voices and have them heard. We appreciate the chance to present here, and we are thankful for any consideration this topic receives. If there are any questions or concerns, please feel free to ask us, as we will be happy to answer. Now, if she's up next, I would like to introduce Cordelia Tangeman.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Cordelia Tangeman, and I'd like to share a few words about my experience with the Crest program. I've been taking Ebony King's applied math classes for the past two years, starting with Algebra I in my sophomore year of high school. Previously, I had negative experiences with math classes, teachers not answering questions or moving too quickly when covering material. In fifth grade, I had a teacher that put me off of math for years, which likely would become a lifetime hatred of the subject, or not for Crest and Emily. Emily's math classes were a breath of fresh air. She acknowledged that just a single negative experience was enough to make people hate math, which is something I've never heard from a teacher before. For the first time in my life since perhaps fourth grade, I found myself not dreading math. It was Emily's empathy and compassion for us as students that made that class enjoyable and the reason I signed up to take Applied Geometry and will be taking Applied Algebra II next year. There are many students like me in the world, students who have learned to hate math, or science, or English, all because of a single negative experience. But few of them are provided with the ability to repair their relationship with learning as I have. I consider myself incredibly fortunate that Crest exists to afford me the opportunity. Crest is a lifeline for students who, without it, would fall through the cracks. It is vital that Crest's math program remains as it currently is for the 2025, 2026 school year. MIHS's main campus simply doesn't have the ability to provide the resources or support that Crest does, as Shayne stated earlier. If Crest were to lose more of their funding, it would lose the characteristics that make the community so many people benefit from today. Because Crest is more than just a place for classes. It is a community and a vital one at that. Mercer Island School District claims to support and uplift its students with the saying, "Students are the priority." But actions speak louder than words, and when essential programs are consistently being cut, it is hard to believe that the board truly cares about the well-being of its students. But it doesn't have to be this way. By keeping Crest classes as they are currently, the Mercer Island School Board would be taking tangible action to prove that they value the learning and growth of their students. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Seth Lindell, who does not appear to be here. Yeah, and if he's not there, then Megan Hamel will be the next speaker, and she's supposed to be online. Or at least she's signed up for online.
I do not believe Seth is online.
Isn't his email online?
Hello. My name is Megan Hamel, and I speak today as a parent, volunteer, and advocate for gifted and twice exceptional students. I represented G2EL at the PTA Council this year and on the Superintendent Teaching and Learning Association. I'm deeply concerned about the lack of transparency and equity in how the Mercer Island School District is allocating special education resources, especially for dyslexia and ADHD support. I want to thank all of the students for speaking about their positive experience at Crest and advocating for continuation of services and not cutting those. There are currently no trained dyslexia or ADHD specialists at the middle and high school. Meanwhile, families are being forced to hire advocates or attorneys just to obtain a basic IEP, something guaranteed under IDEA. Yet, the district has exceeded its special education budget by over $3 million and is simultaneously accepting over 10 out-of-district students from Hamlin Robinson, including an administrator's child who are all incoming freshmen, many of whom require costly special education services. Where is the logic or fairness in that when Island students at the high school receive no dyslexia support and services and are pushed into private schools in and out of state? Why are residents not being prioritized? And why are the parents not being told our students are hampering the budget or being told they are? Many of us parents are paying private school tuition in tutoring and specialized remediation for our dyslexic ADHD students to attend schools here in their community. How can leadership and the board justify allocating less funds to these families? The PTA and Mercer Island Schools Foundation are already generously supporting a dyslexia pilot program. The district is not spending funds on supporting these families at all. The school PTAs are dipping into rainy day funds to pay for teacher training at the middle and high school. Hundreds of thousands of dollars donated by Island families, this money is drying up. What will the district do to help make sure that we are able to actually pay for things for these students? District employees, children, and open enrollment students have reportedly received IEPs with far less assistance than resident students who have to hire lawyers to obtain one. How is it ethical or legal for Mercer Island taxpayers to fund services that their own children are being denied while non-resident employees and open enrollment students are being given the same? Especially when resident families are leaving the district for Hamlin Robinson, Morningside, or Seattle Academy just to access the support they should receive here. There are seven action items for the school board and superintendent to act on. I realize I don't have a lot of time, so I won't go through the details of each. I will just list them. One, public reporting on open enrollment. Two, funding transparency. Three, equity audit. Four, safety and disciplinary reporting. Five, a moratorium on out-of-district special education enrollments. Six, board oversight measures. Seven, a community forum. I'll just go into detail until I run out of time. One, public reporting on open enrollment. Please release a report showing the number of open enrollment or and out-of-district students, including how many are children, district employees, the school, and year and next. Disclose the revenue. Thank you, and I'll email this to the district so that it can be included in public record.
Yes, thanks, and that will get distributed to the board.
Thank you for your time.
Bye-bye. And finally, we have, sorry, we have Robert O'Callaghan.
Hi, I'm Robert O'Callaghan. I've been a parent in the district for three years now. I've got a leaving second and a fourth grader. Over the years, I've seen many of their classmates go to different schools, like outside the district. And really, this is indicative of a much larger trend of parents on the island sending their kids out of the district. Between, like, over the last five or 10 years, I think we've dropped down to maybe 34% of parents on Mercer Island sending their kids out of district. And I think we really have to address, like, one of the fundamental causes of this, which is that the reasons that, like, some of my kids' classmates are leaving the district. And it's really about the academic performance. And so, like, I've seen, like, a large fraction of their classmates are going to outside math tutoring. And this is not just to, like, for being hypercompetitive. This is just basic things, like having, like, an eight-year-old knowing their times tables up to 10. And I've also seen that, like, my kids and probably most of the kids in our class don't, like, in the elementary years, don't have, like, a love of reading, like, novels. And this is something that, it doesn't seem to be instilled by the current English language curriculum. The, one of the fundamental things about the budgets is that the funding that we get from the state is tied to enrollment. And open enrollment doesn't really cover that. It doesn't, it can't make up for that shortfall because still with the funds from the state, there's $3,000 to $5,000 that have to be provided by the taxpayers in the district. So we really need to address the fundamental issues of the instructional quality, the curriculum in the elementary school. I've been talking to a number of parents in the district who've made it through the, all the way to high school, and they've almost unanimously said that there is a steep discontinuity between going from, jumping from the elementary to the middle school and then the middle school to the high school. By the time the kids get to high school, the academic rigor is pretty serious. They have really high-quality AP English, AP classes all around. But they've all said that they were not prepared by middle school. The middle schools didn't give enough homework, et cetera. And I have my doubts that the current math curriculum is preparing the elementary students for being on track for completing successfully Algebra I in the eighth grade. So I would like the school district to address these issues, and I think that will go a long way in addressing the budget issues. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last public speaker. Thanks, everyone, for your input. The next item that we have on today's agenda is board reorganization under Board Calcy 1005. It's that time of year under our new system where we need to look again at our legislative representatives. The way, we changed the system last year so that we would have two representatives at the same time, a senior one and a junior one, kind of like we do with the student reps. Oh, I was saying, sorry. And so, it's been, Director Lee has been the senior rep for the last year, correct? Year and a half?
Year and a half.
Year and a half. And Director Martinez has been the junior rep. And so typically what would be happening now would be Director Lee will step off of that, off of the led rep, I don't know, off of her led rep responsibilities, Director Martinez would step up, but there's some kind of complications with that. Do you want to talk about what you would like to do, Christina?
So, the main issue, mostly I, right now, have a leadership position in Wassa, so my influence during, particularly in the General Assembly, is my participation will be more as an observer just to break this boundary and make clear that I'm not influencing anything, and I want to remain transparent on where I'm serving and when I'm serving reach. One is to support the state as a whole, and then the other is advocating for our district. So that is important in that sense. And that pretty much.
So you'll need someone else basically to attend the General Assembly and vote on behalf of Mercer Island?
Yes, however, however, that will, in the current model, it will happen anyway, because we can only have one vote per district.
Right.
We are two led reps.
Yeah, so it just has to be, so what you need now is you need a junior led rep, so to speak, for, for like, the next half of the year, basically, until we, until after the election.
So, and I have this question.
Yeah.
So are you saying, I am, sorry, I thought this was, it probably was a bit.
Yeah.
You're saying that we're only electing the next led rep or is the junior?
So my suggestion would be.
You just have one.
Yeah, great question. My suggestion would be that we just try and cover the next six months, since we're about to have two different new members starting in December. So it would be someone to just fill that spot and be, like, the voter for Mercer Island and.
But leave empty the junior rep position then. Are you saying that is.
I mean, no, they would be, like, the junior rep for six months and then swap out again. I'm sorry, go ahead, Jody.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're seeing some of the unguilty aspects of this structure, which I was a little dubious of, but we can always amend it back. I guess my, I guess my comments are a few bold. I mean, one, I'm not trying to quite understand this idea of neutrality with Wassa. I mean, we want a representative for Mercer Island, I mean, the same way that the Senate or Congress, like, I mean, presumably, like, this is better for Mercer Island, is that you are involved in resolution drafting and can shape that for the benefits of Mercer Island. So like, my suggestion would be that Christina becomes the senior led rep, we leave the junior vacant, which would then be filled following elections.
Yeah, to me, I think that, what I want to make clear is that only in the General Assembly, I can participate, but I cannot vote for Mercer Island. So that is my, is that across the board with all resolution and the ones who are sitting on the resolution, yes, we can't, that is part of.
And the General Assembly is one?
No, but, yeah, in the General Assembly, we cannot vote, or the resolutions are for Wassa, that, but only the resolutions, not the positions, right? Like, I mean, I'm not, but you can. Yes, yes, absolutely, because it's a turnip, it's just an internal portion of it. It's just, and that means that I cannot vote, but you could vote, be the one voting for Mercer Island.
There's typically, like, not very, I mean, there's very few resolutions typically, isn't there? Isn't it much more priorities for Wassa that, for, what's the other term?
The platforms, the legislative platforms.
Yeah, there's way more platforms than resolutions, right?
Yes, but there are a few of the others.
Correct, correct. I'm just saying, it's not like, I know you're everything, I'm just trying to ask you a few questions.
It's clear by way, Jody and then, right? So, the General Assembly is something that generally we all sun plan, that other school board members also may attend, so I think that it shouldn't be too arduous to have, like, say, oh, Dan is here, or Deborah is here, or Jody's here, or Megan Ty is here, so, you know, one of us will just do the actual life raising of our hand for Mercer Island if that's what needs to do to conform to the Wassa rules. And Christina, if you are not comfortable being the solo led rep, just because it is a lot of work, I'm happy to lead rep, junior led rep pro temp until new people come in, so that there's two people in the role, or I'm sure, like, whenever other board members are, if you're happy being, if, because it is the summer and it's a slow season, if you're happy being solo, then, then that's also totally fine. That's up to you as the person who's the senior led rep and the one doing the work. Kind of like, what support do you prefer, right?
And I'm just, but just to Deborah's point, and also probably to Ann's, is that I don't think it's necessary, I mean, I think that someone else besides you would be at the General Assembly anyways, generally, usually in my experience, we've had other board members there that aren't just the led reps that I can think of, but.
Yeah.
I'll defer to lovely conversation and continue.
Oh, I was gonna say, you know, the timing of the end of the school year, the board being on a different timeline, I raised this several years ago with regards to president, like, like, do we, and I actually just read about a district in the area, and I can't remember which one, with elections now for their leadership, so, like, doing it in June. So I don't think there's a perfect time, so, I mean, there's always issues with turnover of board and elections and, you know, and then there's two candidates versus three candidates, and then some are unopposed and some are opposed, and I just think, I mean, for that is impossible, and then you just kind of deal with it as we, as we move forward. So, I, I mean, I, you know, I can't remember, I mean, I'm certainly willing to try this in terms of shifting different than the rest of the leadership, but I think this presents another, you know, wrinkle in the system. I don't think there's a perfect one, and I don't think it's bad that we kind of go with the flow either. I also don't think that it's bad to look at, you know, leaving it as is. I don't think it's, I mean, having, having served on all of the positions, I don't think it's an arduous task to serve as VP and led rep at the same time, especially during non-legislative session, because it isn't as intense. And now that we have the senior and junior, going back to electing them all at the same time in December or June, whatever it is that people think is most appropriate, I mean, December's fine, and with the turnover of the board, it might make the most sense. We switched to June because of, that way someone's not coming on new at the beginning of a led session, which is a weird time to be shifting, because so much of the crap work is done. So, you know, my proposal also, my suggestion at this point is to leave things as is with our junior and senior, and then switch to the new board in December and decide to, as part of leadership, to elect new leadership, including junior and senior, and that way, arguably Christina would be senior, I mean, that's up to them, but that way there isn't a whole shift and Christina has the, the, the relationships with, that we were concerned about, and understanding of the role. So, so, I mean, we're gonna, we, the board is going to have these, I mean, and it continues to, as we have leadership, and do you really want someone in a contested, contested election as president at the time of the campaign, because it's, anyways, all of those things come up, and I just think we've historically done a good job of dealing with it in the moment, and whether, I mean, I stepped down as president when I had a contested election, people can make their, their own choices. I, I just think we deal with it. My proposal, based on these circumstances, is that we, if people are willing, stay, don't do a change in the led rep roles at this moment.
And we have, just to interject, that we have also done other leadership changes this time of year, just again, needing to kind of roll with the situation. Christina?
I'm just saying that, I thought it was proposed, it was, the goal was always to have this continuity.
Yes.
That, and to build, to build in instead of repeating the previous. So, I do think that, that having this, if, if, I know that is six months and this will be circumstance, but at the same time, if we keep shifting the goal, I do believe that remaining with originality, yeah, will give more support to the legislation work to be have been tuned for. It can remain the way that, I think that, yeah, I think that mid-year is the right time to do it.
Yeah. Definitely, I remember having the same concerns, like, when, when this idea was originally proposed, but, but I was swayed, and I'm still swayed, by the fact that really nobody should be starting this job for the first time and be solely responsible for, right before legislative session begins. It just is not a recipe for success for anyone, that person, or our district, or schools in general. So my suggestion would be, we go ahead with what's scheduled, which is to move Christina up to senior led rep, and then, Jody, it's up to you, you can either just step out and Christina can, can draw on any of us for support if she needs someone to be there to vote or, or what in September, you know? Or you just, guys, just switch.
We have four other board directors who could be junior led rep, and then when there's a shift, if that position becomes vacant, then it becomes vacant. I don't think anyone needs to do it alone.
Yeah, so then, so then, why don't, why, does somebody else want to be junior led rep?
Everyone does.
Dan or Deborah?
One or.
Is someone else willing? It would look to be junior, given that you don't need to be junior in the sense of learning as a job, you know?
And in this case, and this particular case, that is six months, it is, it is, it will not be every year, next year will be a whole year, so this is a unique situation.
Yeah.
This is a low season, kind of, this is more when we're willing by legislators to our district, to meet the schools, to talk to students, it's kind of a different type of relationship that we'll feel with legislator than actually advocating for different things. It will look different, but then there will be a switch in December with the new ones, the elected ones, and then it's like a different type of work, and that's a different model that starts working between December, and it's perfect, December 1st is when they, well, December is when they start, we will wrap up the legislation at vocacy, and it's when they come in board, so it is the right time, so.
It sounds like you have, one option is this pro temp with Jody to continue. Two would be, because I know you've already expressed you do not want to take that on, so it would be Deborah or Dan who would step, who would be for the next six months, or you have this third option that you've contemplated, which is she would, Christina would bring in someone as needed. That one's gonna be probably a little more challenging, just because being on the fly and schedules or whatnot, but that seems to be your three that you have on the table.
I retract that one, it doesn't sound like this.
Which I think that, yeah, we always do. I mean, when we, when, when one of us has a conflict with anything, then we reach out to other board directors, and typically, it's not a problem to find someone to fill in. I am, I'm willing to, and be a placeholder and a partner in terms of, I would just defer to those who are continuing on the board, if that's, to the desire. If neither, if no one wants to or is willing to, I am willing to be a partner to Christina. I actually love working with her. It's, I, I, my schedule's more challenging than it has been in the past with more travel and things like that, but, but I don't have a conflict at this point in time with the led session or with General Assembly.
And General Assembly will be virtual this year.
Is what?
Is virtual.
So, I, I mean, I'm willing to, but I recognize my laid-up status and defer to others, so that's a. I mean, in all honesty, I mean, it's, I don't need to build relationships with, I mean, I'll always be advocating, but I don't need to be building those relationships, and.
Dan, are you sure you're.
I mean, my positions, I, by the way, like, I, my.
I mean, my positions, I, by the way, like I, my position was legislative rep um when I came on the board. I think it's pretty effective on regionalization, um, so I think one can be effective, like hitting the ground running. Um, I'm willing to do so, but my priorities are on regionalization and other issues. I I don't think it's shared by the rest of the board, as evidenced by a 4-1 vote on whether there is a funding crisis. Um, so I mean, I I come at it with a different perspective of what the legislative issues are that we should be tackling.
Christina?
And I will say that that, as I said, it was minimum, uh, I think that is minimum. I think it was more on, there will be a lot of work done with the students, with the things that we have planned right now, so it's it's uh. But uh, but I do think that the ledge rep should be on board on what we all vote as a board. That is, that is something that I believe that, although all the things should coordinate for, according to policy, yeah. But it is, it is important, so at this time, if you're willing to, let's move further to the junior board and then continue the model to see if this will work for student leadership to continue uh and then uh.
Yeah.
And that's good.
That's great.
Yeah, um, I I'm not saying I will never do it, although I think I might have said in the past, but this is not the year for me. I just, no, 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 and when I say I don't think it's arduous for VP to do ledge rep. It's very different for president if I, having served on all of them and if I was making the choice, that that's a huge amount of meetings and, yeah.
Okay, uh, in that case, we are supposed to uh call for nominations for legislative representatives to serve during the ensuing year. We need a motion, uh, we need to do a one at a time. So um, first I need a motion for someone to be the senior legislative representative, and I'll need a second.
I nominate Christina to be senior, if that happens.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of Christina being the senior ledge rep, please say.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call vote, uh, including the students, yes, including the students. Um, all in favor of Christina being a uh being the senior legislative rep, like roll call vote. Students, Lucy?
Aye.
Okay, then. Deborah?
Aye.
Christina?
Aye.
Dan?
I'm staying.
Jody?
Aye.
Me?
Aye.
Okay, that is two students, yes, um, four board members, yes, one abstention. Okay, congratulations, Christina. And then I need a nomination for the junior board rep uh to serve for the next six months. And a second.
I'm nominating Deborah to be the junior ledge rep.
Next second, okay, um, all in favor of.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call, yeah, well, I have to save a thing. All in favor of uh Deborah Larry serving as the junior board rep for the next six months, please say aye by roll call vote. Lucy?
Aye.
Eva?
Aye.
Deborah?
Um.
Christina?
Aye.
Dan?
I'm staying.
Jody?
Aye.
Me?
Aye.
So that is again two zero students and four ayes board members and one abstention. Thank you very much, congratulations, Deborah. That was a lot. I think for Christina, thank you, it's it's helpful.
It's good to talk with you.
No, 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 it's helpful, and and it's like every time we hit kind of a six month mark with this policy, we're gonna butt up against the law a bit.
Yeah.
And every zero is different, every election is different, it's. Very true. Okay, next, we have um partial governance process monitoring, work policy eighteen hundred oh six, budgeting financial plan, review of draft budget summary for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. The draft budget? And then we use it again.
Wanna just begin, um, you know, we we made it through another audit of our twenty three, twenty four year, and um, you know, it was a clean audit. Uh, there are always things that they like to find or give us suggestions on, but um, as we've looked at the financial health and and OSPI does a number of different metrics, um, you know, three years in a row, we've made progress uh on their metric in terms of our growth. And so today's the culmination of a number of documents you've seen over the past couple of months in preparation, although there'll be a few others um as well. Today's intended to go page by page, get everyone uh have questions, um have a discussion, and then we'll bring you back um the first reading on the sixteenth, which is on Monday. And then we'll have the second reading and the vote for the resolution. Am I going on right? Yeah, first resolution was sixteen, the reading. And then the budget hearing and the actual vote would be the last meeting in June on the twenty sixth. So with that, I will turn it over to Martin.
Thank you, Dr. Ongin. Uh, first, I'd like to thank Executive Director Battersby and your HR team, did a lot of work behind the scenes along working with business services teams, the two individuals to my right, Director Adams and Assistant Director Garcia Focker. It's been a lot of work, as you know, we started this process in January, we are here now. A little bit later presented this to you than we would have liked, but that's the way legislature rolls at times. But we're glad we're here now doing this. Let's jump into this, uh, we have twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget summary for you. Um, right off the bat, we have the table of contents, and we rock into the introduction of executive summary. Um, at the bottom of page four, I think it's always been our goal, and I'll paraphrase, in the presentation of this budget, to provide accurate, straightforward, and concise information to both you all and our community about the districts' educational programs and services for twenty five, twenty six, as it translates into the financial plan, the budget, this document in particular. And then on the page five, we jump into the rise of the needs of this document. Uh, we start off as we always do, whether it be the year end report or this report with a table throughout the different parts of this document. This case, it's expenditure comparison for all funds, our five major funds, our general, capital, debt service, ASB, and transportation. With these tables, we always look year to year, in this case, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, twenty five, twenty six as a comparison. Not always quite equal, given what the legislature does year to year, but it is our best look year over year. We provide a change in dollar figure, but also a percent change that helps us take a look at why is there those changes? And then below, we provide analysis. In this case, uh, we provide analysis for capital, debt service, ASB, and transportation. Then we'll do a deep dive into the general fund on page seven. If we look at capital year over year, we see a change of about negative million point four. That's mainly due to reduction in salaries and benefits as we're trying to kind of wean ourselves off the cap tech using it that way. But also, there's been some completion of projects that we'll see this summer, in particular, the last meeting discussed Mary Lee Pool is a major project, as we don't have that level of projects going on next summer. And then we have debt service, this is due to obviously we established a rescheduled payments. Two, geez. Uh, because we refunded the twenty fourteen bonds, part A, about forty four million and saved about a million and a half dollars. And then ASB and transportation is on no real significant changes in the fundraising or fees going out for ASB. And then transportation kept the six hundred thousand. If we do a little deeper dive in why six hundred thousand, has our buses depreciate year over year? Little ones depreciate over an eight year period, our larger ones about thirteen years. Uh, we purchased two little buses this year, what is worth about three hundred thousand dollars. So we have room in that budget to purchase more budget, more buses as they depreciate out. And also, as we go through here, very casual, if you have questions, simply jump in, we want to answer those for you.
Yeah, I have a question on the calculation of the ending fund balance. I know in the past, there was a question of, you know, what point in the year, you know, for the fund balance reserve, then we clarified that that it's as of the fiscal year end on August thirty first of each year. I assume the denominator, we're looking at expenditures. And then if we are looking at expenditures rather than revenues for the denominator in the calculation of the percentage, is that a twelve month go forward? And then do we then update that as the projected expenditures for the twelve month going forward period becomes the actual? And then the second part of the question, this can be provided by email afterwards or at the next board meeting, um, is just how the projections, because I mean, projections are just that, I mean, right? Like projections, how they actually um compare to actual over the years?
Well, on the, one thing we do when we're doing the budget two is add capacity, and we don't try to budget our enrollment at the full amount we're gonna receive, which will increase our reserves. We went, you'll see later on in this document, we reviewed our enrollment and decided to change it to thirty eight fifty instead of thirty eight twenty because of the current standard we have in registration. We still have about fifty FTE we believe we will receive, and that fifty FTE will then use to help with the reserves and the fund balance. Because we budgeted for thirty eight fifty, that's what we stacked at. Fifty additional students spread out through the district should not cause a hardship anywhere, and that will be extra reserves, so we should receive about five hundred to five hundred and fifty thousand more in revenue. We built capacity for that in this system.
And but in terms of the the calculation, are we looking at a twelve month go forward? And I mean, I guess one question, are we looking at expenditures rather than revenue for the denominator? And then two, what is that twelve month period? Is that projections? And if it is projections, are that, is that then updated when they become actual? At the filing of that one ninety six?
We look at expenditures, yes, and we do make adjustments as the year goes on and checks and checks the balance throughout the year.
And then it'd be helpful for my benefit to see how the projections compare to the actual because there's substantial lag between projections and actual, particularly on the budget. Reserve, we're budgeting for the twelve month going forward, which then don't actually become actual until whatever, like eighteen months going forward or seventeen months, whatever.
Is that like an extra line on the monthly dashboard? Is that what you're wondering on that?
I mean, particularly for the budget, because I mean, that's one of the biggest things we do annually. And so to understand how our projections over time is meeting the actual, I mean, that's where it's most relevant. It'd be for the upcoming meeting for approving the budget, to understand what our track history is of meeting our projections. And then understanding exactly what we're talking about um with the reserves. So we're all on the same page that it is, in fact, expenditures in the denominator and that those become actual when that one ninety six rather than projected.
And we don't know that until mid October.
Sure, it's really going back, I know. Right, yeah, we have that one ninety six, you know, sixteen months in the rear, but people tend to forget what the projections were two years earlier.
And you already have it up there, and you're named Director Ounzer, so onto page six.
Okay, um, we'll start the analysis into the general fund expenditures. And as we all know and have learned over the years, our expenditures in general fund are eighty three, are projected for at least twenty four, twenty five, twenty six to be eighty three percent, point two five staffing related, and the rest is for MSOs, so materials, supplies, and operating cost. Uh, the chart below is because our RCW, all school districts must present a four year plan of their expenditures to the board as well as to the couple. And so here we have our listed for twenty five, twenty six budget, which is what we're discussing today. And then projections for twenty six, twenty seven, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty eight, twenty nine. These are really just guesses as to what we think we're going to have. We know our general fund expenses will increase year to year um just because staffing costs increase and supply and services increase. So for general fund for next year, eighty point five million. Um, and then in twenty eight, twenty nine, we're looking at possibly eighty three million. Again, this is just a projection of what we think we'll be at. Uh, the estimated ending fund balance that's listed below is for next year, we're hoping to be within five to six percent of our um funded value protection. And by twenty eight, twenty nine, be within compliance at nine, between nine and ten percent. The next fund is capital projects. We're projecting probably in seventy four thousand, seven hundred and twenty four. Uh, but in twenty six, twenty seven, we're looking at it decreasing because the grant that we have with King County for the pool, that um project will be done, and so we don't know what the expenditures would be for the next years. Um, but we know we will be having some. Our debt service has changed um due to the amortization schedule, so we're projecting out those expenses based on that schedule. Our ASB fund, we're projecting one point nine million for next year. Um, and looking at future years, we know there's going to be activity. We are building capacity for, you know, possible more trips that the bands or other organizations might be taking. And with our transportation vehicle fund, we're projecting six hundred thousand for next year and capacity within the following three years for potential bus purchases as well.
I assume that's assuming there's no transportation lobby.
Correct, I do.
Right.
Um, on page seven is where we get a deeper dive into our general fund expenditures, specifically moving from program codes to object code. It gives a little bit better look, if you will, at salary certified, salaries classified, benefits, into the MSO world, supplies, materials, purchase services, travel, and capital.
So here we go, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question on purchase services, but maybe.
Always good. On that, on the second page, you'll see explanations of why increase and decrease. We'll start at certificated salaries, they'll increase about seven hundred thousand. Remember, all certificated staff got IPD plus one percent, but then we did make a reduction, so the increase was only seven hundred thousand. It should have been closer to one point five to almost two, so we did savings there. Um, classified, there is actually a reduction, we reduced um classified staff in some positions. Um, some of them were um needed and overstapped, and we made adjustments throughout. Um, benefits actually dropped this year, um, reducing staff helped us with SEV. SEV is up to over fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty four dollars next year per person for the year. So by reducing staff, that reduced that cost. Also, um, the retirement rates at the state dropped a lot for next year. I'm not sure why they chose that, but like TERS went down by two point one two percent, and SERS went down by three point four four percent, so there's. Oh, they're different types, sorry, they're different types of um retirement plans for certified and classified people. There's two different types. So the reduction really did savings on the on retirement side that we will be having to pay out. I'm not sure why the state reduced the percentage rate that we collect or they pay, but that's what they did. Which means employees receive less. If what pays in from the state is going to be less than what we pay, what we pay out is less. Don't ask me, the state made an adjustment on the rate. They they do that yearly, last year they opted, this year they just decreased it. I bet next year we'll see enough with the legislature. I think it's based on their budget too, what they have available to spend for retirement, so.
All right, do you have, hang on, Brett, do you have your?
Oh, sorry, nope.
Is that you?
Yeah, I guess, following up on Deborah's question, contractually, how is it that we're sort of backstop the benefits if the state doesn't? I mean, I would assume that whatever reduction, just the reduction and that is what it is, and people can take it up with the state legislator. But how is it that that we're responsible financially, legally for that short? No, I'm serious, I mean, so is that like, is that in the contract? I mean, why, and then if so, is that standard in something in my view? Like, I I'm not sure why we're insured the state's obligations on this.
That is a great question, I know.
That was hard, so it it's such a great question, and and it really goes back to the shift from uh when coming out of the, there was the Obama legislation, and then there was the McCleary decision that all happened at the same time, and they had different changes. Prior to that, we used to have our own broker who brokered our insurance. And we would be out on the market, we'd have competing um um insurance groups who would be competing for our business, and each of the districts were doing that. When SEV came along, the um state and employees benefits board, correct? Um, that is when the legislature said that the state would take over all of the the benefits, and the districts can no longer go out and work on their own. And so when they did that and took away that opportunity, we now have to pay into SEV. We don't have a choice any longer, that would have to be a legislative thing.
I understood, but I'm saying we shouldn't guarantee an amount other than what, we should not contractually obligate ourselves, in my opinion, it seems, to anything above and beyond what's provided through SEV. And I think it's something that future boards should look at as an item if contractually, which it sounds like we are.
What would be an example above and beyond, in your mind, just?
Yeah, I mean, like, well, it's just like, why is this financially, I mean, I understand SEV goes up and down, but if like, we're not financially on the hook, I can imagine we would want to advocate at the legislative level, but it seems like we are financially under the hook, or we're not paying, we wouldn't be paying out as a result.
Well, it's because our personnel numbers are high.
Right, we're well above prototypical schools.
But still, like, we've contractually, whatever it is, we've contractually obligated ourselves to pay this amount that we're not receiving.
I don't know if it's contractual, we've made staffing decisions that have done that. So it's not in the contract that says we have to have a certain amount. We've made decisions to staff at a higher level than what the state. We've made decisions to staff at a higher level than what the state.
Okay, so like, we know that we, what we got in, we just, I mean, contractually, whatever it is, like, I mean, these are our expenses, and this is like.
Yeah, I mean, if an example of that, of a variable we can control are having job shares. If the more job shares we have of positions that qualify for benefits, the more we have to pay out on. And so if one person is doing a one point oh position at the high school, then we're paying on insurance on one person. If someone is doing a point four and another one is doing the point six, we then are paying on both, on a point four, correct? We're paying on both of those. So those are variables. Now, we have to weigh that. Maybe that point four person has been in the district for a while. It's the perfect person to teach an obscure class, and we make that decision. But those are things that are starting to surface for our district and others as to, can we really afford job shares? Can we afford the splits because they do cost more? We are having transparent conversations about that.
If I'm just understanding this correctly, so if we are sometimes, as as Dan says, paying more than the state is paying us, but that is sort of like a, like diamond shoes are too tight situation, where it's because we have the ability through our foundations or the other support that we get as a district to hire above the prototypical school model. And because we are lucky enough to have extra paraprofessionals in classrooms or extra instructors or extra programs that aren't funded by the state, then that's why we have this, okay?
And the levies.
And the levies, exactly right. So it's the financial support that we receive that other districts might not.
And it's state law, if somebody works over six hundred and thirty hours, they qualify for SEV. We have no way of refusing that. And the state has chosen that even if somebody is above prototypical school and they waive their insurance, we still have to pay that money to the state, even though we receive no revenue in for that individual. And that's when the change in SEV made a difference because full time people got full time benefits, part time got part time. The change made part time people get full time benefits. So it was very expensive for school districts now.
And very part time.
Yes.
Like point two, right?
No, you have to be at least a point four. Six hundred and thirty hours is the limit. And once that person, even subs hit that rate, we have to pay benefits on them now. Before SEV, we didn't have to pay benefits on subs for them, and that's a change.
I just, I just wanted to make clear, my eye rolling was about the system. No, and not everything that anyone was saying. And I think this is an example of of our, I don't want to have a whole philosophical discussion, but of our broken system, that the state requires us to do things that don't, I mean, anyways, this is just one example, and, you know, legal costs and utility costs. And they they took over the SEV, and yet it doesn't make any sense for. There, I don't, I don't believe there's a single district in our state that follows the prototypical school model. So U C Foundation, it's, I I think very little of it is currently Foundation. It's it's levy dollars. It's that that we 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 know the prototypical school model is broken until the legislature fixes it, and then they keep coming in and trying to micromanage more. I mean, there's, anyways, yes, and it's, I mean, it's just one example. But I just want to make sure that my reaction was clear, that it's systemic, that it's it's part of the problem is we can't rely on, we can't predict, we can't forecast, we can't rely on things because they're ever changing.
Next down is supplies. There is a slight reduction. We did not change the supplies at the buildings of school level. It was mostly departments that we reviewed, each department and saw where we could do reductions. The schools will receive the same supplies, material, and operating cost as they've received last year. Contract services are up for a couple reasons. First of all, our insurance went from fourteen point two percent down to twelve percent increase for our insurance. Second was our utility costs have gone up. There's nothing we can do about that one either. Third is special ed. We have some contract services that are going to be needed to be provided next year, so they have an increase of about nine hundred thousand in their contract services.
So for contracted services, I mean, this seems to be recurring through question in the budget. I mean, it was something last year for missing our budget projections. So he he talked a little bit more at length about that and then following the comments and public comments earlier. Are any of these out of district students that went otherwise, they threw open enrollment for some of these expensive purchase services?
To my knowledge, I don't know if any out of district student is receiving any of this. Most of them are in out of district placements for special ed students that cannot be served within our district.
That's correct.
Yes. So non, non residents, we do not have any on here. We do have some behavioral contracts that have to come through next year. We've had some issues with some resident district students that had to be addressed. So we have some behavioral, also OT P T, which is occupational therapist, speech language. I can't think what else they had. They had like four areas they had to increase with the needs.
That's part of the application process for open enrollment is the needs, and that's something that we talked about to a great extent. That when it's a financial hardship, the concerns are valid as then the board and administration agree, and a close eye is kept on, which is also why, based on the superintendent's recommendation for open enrollment, it was that eight through twelfth grade, well, and now sixth through twelfth grade, as those means are typically much more often identified. And that the the previous open enrollment cycle from the earlier two thousands, when it was K twelve and then siblings who didn't even exist yet, that that was where the huge costs came from. But we can, it's being accounted for. I I think that, I don't want to say it's a red hearing because it's a legitimate concern, but that concern is known and it's been, it is.
The three areas that we look at, and thanks with Michelle and Jamie who had this up, the three areas, discipline, well, four areas, discipline, attendance, on track graduation, and then impact on the budget based on, based on student.
But getting back to the cost increase of the services, putting aside who's receiving it, like nine hundred thousand increase is significant. So if you help me understand, I mean, what that is and why so much and what the percentage is.
Part of it is we are receiving a student that will not be able to attend our district and will have to get out of district placement. That runs in between three, about three hundred thousand a year for one student out of state. And we are going to be receiving a student who special ed was notified. Other costs have gone up, and that's not open enrollment. No, that's a resident district student.
Who we are required to educate us to make sure they get an education.
And we might get some safety net back.
Well, we'll get safety net for that, and that's, you know, added into the budget, too.
Add a sixty percent.
I mean.
You have to hit, they're lowering the threshold on safety net, which will help.
I do want to be sensitive, too. We are talking kind of discreetly about individual students in public, and I do want to be cautious about some of the potential for confidentiality. Would be my only caution on our conversation. At that level, there might be other ways to talk about it in a different closed session, but none of these are students. I can, I can assure the board that all of our students who are receiving the level of support that would escalate into safety net are all resident students.
Christina.
I'm, I you did an identification, so there's some also contracts for behavioral in-house. And is that better than having in-house staff or not? Or if it's.
I think that's more of a special ed, a special, special education question than coming to me. They use, they try to meet the needs of every student as much as possible, and trying to hire individuals with specialized skills sometimes is very difficult. And so we made sure that there was capacity so that they would be able to receive the services they need.
There's also a lot of specialized training that that is required for working with certain types of behaviors, and and that not, we wouldn't necessarily have someone in-house that already has that training, so you'd have to be hiring someone for specific, whereas there are like agencies that provide these types of services, like around our region. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, at another time, I mean, just hundreds of thousands of dollars is extraordinarily expensive. I mean, particularly, unfortunately, in a world of finite, finite resources, there has to be some sort of utilitarian calculus. It's not open ended expense. No, no, I mean, we we cut, we cut nurses, we cut librarians. So for my interest, it's understanding the extent of the discretion that we have in in determining solutions for for students so they can meet our legal requirements as well as provide the best education possible. But we live in a world of finite resources, and just some of these amounts strike me as astronomical, given some of the costs we've made.
It's true in medicine as well, but it's a complicated question.
Yeah, no, I agree, they're complicated questions. I mean, I think you guys are asking that, that's the reason we have unsustainable debt.
Yeah, just, yeah. Okay, moving on.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, Deborah.
So so it isn't, I'm not looking for answers from you guys, but in terms of just kind of where this, I I think it's a legitimate concern. I think, question, and with the confidentiality, what type of audit, this is a front question, what type of audit is done with regards to special education services and how those services are provided? Like, is that something that 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 the board can? Perhaps that's an interest of the board in the future to hear about an explanation of what type of internal, and it's much more difficult because.
Well, we do state audits as well every year. There are, they're similar to on the auditing of our finances. There is more auditing on special education than there are, say, in Title III. And so there are audits that we go through and and that those are are things. Those are usually every other year. So that's something that we could walk through and and have a study session on. I'm making a note here of what that can look like. Then we're always looking from the financial lens as well as the student service lens as to what that looks like. You saw some students here today advocating for more support and a richer staffing model that we've been able to provide, and those are areas that we've had to look at, not having that same outlay from before, so.
Yeah, that would be a really good topic for a study session at some point, just to learn more about the process. But this is just, just to say, as a, as a, wear my OT hat for a brief moment. This is not something new. You know, this is something that has been in place for decades.
On travel, we're hoping to receive a decrease in travel because we'll continue with online training as much as possible instead of people traveling. It's a cost savings that we could make. Below that is capital outlay. The state changed their ruling on capital outlay. It was for a single purchase of five thousand or more or component of items that equal five thousand or more. They raised it to ten thousand. That does not include textbooks. So we do not make a lot of large purchases for single items over ten thousand, so that's the reduction in that area.
Sorry, can you say that again?
Capital outlay is a weird thing, the state of Washington. You have to have a single purchase or a component of items that equal ten thousand starting next year. So if it's like a sound system that came to eleven thousand, yes, you'd use the nine thousand code. If it's a hundred computers, no, you would use a supply code.
I see.
So it's still supplies of materials to the code.
This is a different area.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's an accounting issue that they changed, hence there's, it looks as if there's a reduction per se, but it's really just an increase in ten thousand.
Yeah. Fifty million. Yeah. And is that tech included in that? Yeah, um, tech, and we buy most of our tech in from CapTech. So, yeah, that's a, got it, that's a different, yeah.
On page nine and ten, we have some colorful charts. Those, the layperson, if you will, that looks at this document to say, hey, year over year, twenty four, twenty five, twenty five, twenty six, personnel costs, which is M S O C costs. And then in the middle, a little explanation of what those personnel expenses include, a little M S O C, materials, supplies, and operating costs is, what does that include also? And then a helpful chart in ten is the year over year, where our sources of revenue come from. We look at local, state, and federal, and you can see the differences year over year in the percentages and breakdown for total revenue. Four point one percent, we estimate next year will come from federal funds. There's a deeper topic and a deeper dive we could go into. Sixty eight point six percent from the state and twenty seven point three percent local other. That's typically our levies. The four point one percent in the federal, we are hearing whispers, of course, we all are effectively as what we'll be, what we'll receive and what we won't, but we're predicting an estimate of three point two for next year.
And we don't anticipate, I think I have a blurb about this in the board update. We're not anticipating loss next year. And losses that would come, the state has committed to being able to fill. It's the following year, which is the budget that's being discussed in Washington, D.C. right now that we're watching closely. That one would be the one for the twenty, twenty six, twenty seven school year. That would be a bigger concern.
And like I said, we are hearing whispers across the board, our colleagues, whether that be the possible crowd or special services, special ed crowd, but I don't know if there's any concrete.
I guess just that less budget, more legislative, and it will come in to whether or not there's a position on the state backfilling when the backfill becomes significant. Because if there is, that's a reallocation of resources, which is going to affect different districts differently, and it would be harmful to our district.
Now, on page eleven, district information. Kind of give the, like I said, the layperson reader, kind of an overview of how the district operates, functions, governance, et cetera. Page twelve is board of directors, you all, the school board. Of course, this just changed, so I'll make changes prior to formal presentation on the twenty sixth. Page thirteen is district administration. There are some changes as we move forward here, I'll make those also. Page fourteen, district administration, schools and principals. This is fairly up to date at this point, but we're in the process of hiring an associate principal at the high school, so that will change also. On to page fifteen, there are changes there also with the board chart of the school district. So if they can have most of these wrapped up and changed by the time this is formally presented on the twenty sixth with our hearing. On page sixteen, this was presented, discussed on April twenty fourth. Student fee schedules, I believe there are no changes to this for next year. And on page seventeen, we have the student calendar. And then on page eighteen, this was presented and discussed, the property taxes and tax rates for twenty twenty five on March, March twenty seventh.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So can we go back to on page sixteen? This is one more question, Brett. Is Jamie Pressput's job still under learning services? It's not under the high school.
It's going to be into the high school side there, and so you'll see that. And then when it comes through, once we reorg and I put out all of those announcements, that's why Director Solman talked about, that we'll update this and.
That will update, okay, okay, sorry, thank you.
Yep. Then we'll go to page eighteen with property taxes. Once again, discussed at the March twenty seventh meeting. Of course, we added the historic loan, current assessed valuation per your request. And then under the budget development process, once again, a couple pages for those that read this or don't know about solicitor finances and operations. Some verbiage, if you will, that helps them kind of walk through what exactly we do, how we function, how we operate on page twenty. And twenty one, the budget assumptions and priorities. Of course, those budget assumption priorities are attached to our O E S seven, six, in this case, and nine and eight. I did put at the bottom as a note in regard to our downgrading. That's fair amount to be transparent that way. At November twenty four, the district's federating, the N U D was downgraded from an A A one to an A A two, and then give a little bit more explanation why and the factors contributed to that downgrade.
Sorry, I lost you one page earlier.
Can you explain a little bit about that? So you're awaiting for that explanation?
No, no, I just, the explanation's in there. The factors that contributed to the downgrade is under the notes on the bottom of page twenty one.
Do you see it, Christina?
Yeah, yes.
It's our second downgrade in the last three years. We were downgraded from triple A in twenty twenty two to double A one. And now in November twenty four, it was double A one to double A two.
Yeah, didn't they change their criteria?
They did change the criteria, which was frustrating, but also, you know.
Right, we should not be in the note that N U D's changed their internal criteria.
We put that in there, absolutely.
I think it's.
I mean, it's a factor.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I'm not saying take away the other ones.
I would definitely put that in there, thank you. I'm not filling my commentary and how to feel about that.
I didn't get, facts are facts.
On to budget summary and resolution on page twenty three. I will let Director Adams talk about this a little bit more. We presented this on April twenty fourth, but it wasn't complete because we obviously didn't have the information from the closure of the legislature.
Oh, so when you look at this, the twenty four, twenty five are estimated. Oh, um, so when you look at this, um, the 24, 25 are estimated year-end balances, they're estimated, okay? It's not budgeted anymore. So we are looking at this year expenditures of about 77 million, and we're hoping to hit 3.6 million, which will be close to 5% or 4.5, 4.5, between 4.5 to 5% for fund balance, which will be an increase from last year.
It's final in October.
Yeah, after we do, because we have it curls and all, everything that has to be posted back. Um, current budget for our next year, as you see, it's up to, um, 80 million, 597,928. We do have capacity built in that budget because of our enrollment estimates. Um, capital, this is our estimate for this year, we'll end with about $3 million left in capital. Um, our estimate, um, our budget for next year is, we're gonna get about 10 million, 600,000. That'll include money from the county for, uh, this county for the pool, because they are reimbursing us up to 2 million, but we have to first pay off the 2 million before we're getting money back. Um, and then our estimated expenditures are 12 million. And 3 million point, 3.6 million of that is the transfers for salaries within the general fund. It is lower than last year's estimate. We did not, we're not gonna use the total amount we estimated for last year for that inter-fund transfer. This is what we're estimating for next year. We're hoping it'll be lower, but we'll see what happens.
You have a question from?
Your question is, um, how the numbers add up. So for, uh, the general fund balance for next year for 25, 26. Um, I see this starting with 3.6 million, revenues equal expenditures, and then the ending balance goes up by 400,000. So how does it go up since revenues and expenditures?
Because we budget capacity for those additional students that we do not, we have, that we don't, we budget for those 40 to 50 students that we do not have staffing for, which would increase the budget by 400 to 500,000. So it's built within capacity on both sides.
So we essentially think that revenues will be slightly higher than they are by 400,000.
Really? No, expenditures should be about 400,000, less than 1,000.
More.
Yeah, because I have capacity on both sides that equal that amount, and we should not spend the expenditure side of it.
But you do see how?
Yeah.
It doesn't, I mean, I understand that there's sort of like a fudge factor that's built in, but it's not, it's not, I, I think that with note should be, I mean, something, because otherwise the numbers just don't add up.
But we'd like to have a balanced budget when you send it to the state. The state prefers under general fund for it to balance.
Really?
So, yeah.
Like, rather, like, I mean, how do they expect then districts to increase their fund balance from low to negative to zero? If revenues exceed expenditures and never, and revenues never, I mean, if they're the same rather than exceed. I mean, like, otherwise you just by definition cannot build it up.
By building capacity.
Like, are you gonna send it back if our revenues exceed our expenditures?
We don't have to. It's only if you exceed expenditures do you have to, um, send in a budget revision.
Okay, okay, so we could accurately reply to that. Which is just like, I mean, to increase the ra, I mean, it's just like the numbers add up.
Yes.
I mean, it is.
Is this where the, um, we have the auditor who we had to explain to me this year why we're actually not deficit spending? And was that related to this? Do you remember that, or was that a totally different?
No, that was deficit spending, special education.
Got it.
I, I think the issue is, it, you know, I mean, there, there's these accusations of, of lack of transparency. I think the issue is, number one, budgets are predictions, right?
Yeah.
And also, when your revenues are based on number of students, which is an ever-changing thing, one can only predict what we're going to have, and we're not gonna know until the end of the budget. It, it's just a funky way of doing things, and, and I appreciate that, you know, and then in years past, when we, the year that we had the biggest issue was because we had the under, way underestimate of number of students returning after COVID. And so the budget, the expenditures were way higher than the revenues because we didn't get the students and therefore not the portion. So it's a totally backwards way of doing things, but it's the only way to do it. I mean, am I, so it's not, it's not trying to hide the ball, it's that we're basing our revenue prediction based on something that we can't predict accurately. I mean, we make the best effort to predict as accurate as possible, but reality sometimes changes. And so we use our enrollment forecasters, you know, for this reason, and looking at enrollment trends to make the best predictions possible, but that's what budgets are, is they're predictions. So, you know, explanations and, and footnotes and all of that is really important, but, but using it as fact, it, it, these aren't facts. These are predictions, and so you can only fact check after the numbers are in. So, I, I, I mean, I, I, right? I mean, as a layperson, a layperson in terms of, I'm not an accounting expert, and, um, it, just, let's, let's assume that, that our people are making the best predictions that they can and not impose that it's fact until we know what the numbers are.
I, yeah, I'm sorry, Dan, can I just interject, and then Dan and then Christina? Just that, that it's also like the, the school budget, as I have come to understand it, is kind of like a creature that is in constant motion, right? So there's, it's like a system. It's not as simple as saying like, this is how much money we have, a static number, and then we spend this much, and it's, and it's different from having, you know, like a, like a salary that comes in and it's the same amount every month, right? You know, it's, there's times of the year when we're like a little bit getting close to the bottom of the bucket because we're waiting for, you know, the, the time when we get our reimbursements for X, Y, Z, whatever. It's like, you're kind of trying to constantly capture an image of this system as it's in motion, you know? And by necessity, it's going to always be a little bit inaccurate, and then correct it as soon as we've got like the, the specific number, sorry. Dan and then Christina.
I, I certainly understand the timing issue, which is the reason, um, going back about 30 minutes ago, um, for the actual general fund balance versus projections, for my edification, would be nice to know because of the huge timeline, um, to make sure that, you know, it injects like a, a metric of how our projections accord with reality, um, after the fact.
Explain, explain what you're looking for more fully, because I feel like that's what we are addressing, when we get the monthly or?
Well, for, for the, the reserves, one, pending, as I said, that the denominator we're talking about is 12-month go-forward expenditures, which are projections at first, then they become actual, but the actual doesn't actually happen to the FY 96. And that's now almost two years after the budget was passed and like those projections were made. So like memories are short, and like what we projected two years ago versus what actually turned out to be the case. I think we have to revisit to sort of determine our project, how are we doing on our projections? And then second, I mean, this is maybe a question for like financial accounting, but my expectation is just ending fund balance equals beginning fund balance plus revenues minus expenditures, unless there's a footnote that explains why.
Well, we can add a footnote in there that we have capacity built on both sides to be able to increase the fund balance. And I, I would even, I would say even be more explanatory in saying based on enrollment and number of person. You know, I mean, and, yeah, you know what capacity means? Or funding is based on student.
Yeah.
Enrollment.
We'll add a footnote to that.
I mean, we're estimating enrollment, 50 students shy of what we know we ended already this year.
Right, yeah.
And we have to do that to provide for those emergency situations, those parents in the rooms that are needed, or teachers that are needed, et cetera. If we go the other direction, we end up with a $2 million hole.
Right, like we.
Right, yeah, correct.
Thank you. Christina?
Uh, I, I will say that I agree with, with the footnote, I think that for me, I think, I think it doesn't, um, explain the numbers necessarily, and I think that, that is part of, of what we need to put out in here. Um, I will also say that, um, I'm a little bit worried on, um, that it's tied, the fund balance to, to enrollment, and I think that there's nothing we can do, but I also think that the percentage increase of 400,000 is very slow for my comfort. Um, and based on how things are increasing and changing, I, I would like to see if we can revisit the projections and make a goal or decide how we're gonna address what is coming next.
Do you mean on the fund balance side, that you would like to see that grow in the factory?
I, and I, and I said it last time, I think I add more on that, the portion of, of this is not enough, and 400,000, like if, if our insurance increased 4% next year, it's like, we're, we're gonna be in the same spot, we will not be increasing anything. So I think that we have to be realistic and also kind of make, I know that they're projections, but, um, if, I think that we have to make a deep dive into this situation.
I mean, yeah, the faster we grow, the more impact there's gonna be in terms of cuts to program.
I know, I, I know it has to be a balance, and I think that we're in a tough situation. And at the same time, tie this to enrollment, that it might already be 300,000, or it might be 500,000. So, uh, it, it's, it's just not completely comfortable for me, just not knowing what, how much we cut it or not. And that's, that's how I feel, there's this, um, fate.
I wonder if it would be helpful for us, because, because you say this, which I totally respect. Um, but then you were also the one saying, superintendent, I don't want you to cut librarians and, and nurses. So, no, 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 I'm not, I'm just saying this as an example, like it's really, really difficult decisions and choices. And we're, and, and I think that maybe if we had a report, um, kind of a report from our superintendent at a study session to say, like, here's where I'm going with this, and here's my plan for staffing, and as much of a, like, you know, that, that we, we were able to get inside your head a little bit more, which I know when I ask specific questions, I get the answers too, but like as a group, um, to be able to get those answers and explanations of how we're getting there, and if we do this, I, I think that might go a long way to just kind of be able to get inside your head in terms of like, here's the path that, that Fred is on.
So here's an example. So we had really articulate students who were here today. Um, and they were doing a great job advocating for maintaining the same levels. Some of the classes that they were asking to maintain, we have like five kids who wanna take. That's not a class that we can sustain in the current model with only five students enrolled. The number of students who are requesting certain courses, whether or not that's Crest or at the high school or whatnot, um, those ebb and flow. And when there aren't the same number of students, where you have 100 students who all wanna be taking a press walk, and now all of a sudden that's down to 25, it creates places where you have to condense program because they're taking classes somewhere else. And whether or not those are classes that are in core classes at the high school, or those are electives, those are the things that our principals are working through, from basically January 1st through right now, they're working with the HR team, the finance team and me, to figure out what is the right amount of staffing they're gonna need. Lakewood, um, because of the number of students who qualified for, um, highly capable services in the self-contained classroom at Lakewood, there are actually 12 kids who are currently in second grade at Lakewood who are gonna go into that. That means we don't need as many third grade classes next year, but I need more people in our high cap classrooms. So we're turning one of our gen ed classes into a high cap classroom. And so I can go as detailed as you wanna see in terms of the micro-level things or the macro, um, piece on that. If we want to start talking about further reductions, we didn't cut as much in nurses because we looked at it more of the student. Um, but, you know, we did reduce on our, um, our side of the commitment on like fifth grade band and orchestra. There was concern that it wasn't going to maintain the same level. I'm happy to report, and I put it in before, and we're 30 kids up in orchestra and we're over projections there. Parents are funding part of that, the district is. So, um, I think that we would want more discussion, and this could be at the next study session, as to what that would look like in terms of what you would want further reduced in the future to grow fund balance faster. The only other variable are our contracts with our employees. And Director Lowitz has, um, has asked a lot of questions about that. Um, and that is a trade-off in terms of if we're not offering as much to our staff, then where do we fit within the region and what does that look like? And, um, you know, I'm frankly most worried right now in the immediate about our administrators and, and where we're falling behind there, um, which I'm in the process, along with Erin and Matt, um, you know, talking to our administrators about their salaries compared to the region. So I think it goes back to all of your OEs play off of each other. And if we want salaries that are gonna attract and retain, and we want things that are gonna keep us different, like a seven period day, and we want lower class sizes, then other things can't happen as quickly, and, and that would be a very healthy conversation.
Can we just go down the line, Christina and Dan and then Jody?
Yes, and, uh, when I'm suggesting like, uh, uh, we're doing this is first, uh, it, it is just to keep us in reality on where, what was expected and what we have, and I think that you have mentioned this before, like, it's the expectation that we have to do over that, and actually write them and change that expectation or not, and also have these tough conversations, not only with us, it's with the community. What are our trades off? Because this is not, it's a tough decision, this is not a joke. Uh, and we have to make those decisions, and it is, it is, it is, uh, it is the reality. We have to balance the budget and decisions have to be made. And that may include, uh, if we decide that we want to shift other things, and, and there's a lot of things that can be shifted. I will not put anything, just not put it in words, uh, that we're cutting anything or not, but I think that there's tough decision that as a community, merchant and community, we have to make regardless. If we want to achieve a healthy outcome.
Well, that's why you're saying districts talked about closing schools.
Exactly.
Um, you know, and when does that decision, you know, come back up on the table? All of these are board superintendent conversations that are really helping.
And it has to do with the least amount of student impact for sure. But at the same time, we cannot go, uh, into that, and we have to build this fund balance because we actually have to have that, that, that is a healthy way to, to run a school just in case a rainy day comes and it might come.
But to remind, least we have on students, that's a value, so, I mean, the board has continued to have that as a value, but that's a choice. We could say, let's get back to fund balance and, you know, our current students are, right? I mean, we could do that.
And, 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 and that is a tough conversation, that we will have to start talking about when are we gonna, how we can achieve it, because I think we, the values of the community to like where, where we are, and I think that that is, is, is valid. And that's what it is, just because that will do the same in my house. I will be worried if I don't have, uh, enough funds for a rainy day, because I think that is true, and, and that is.
Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, to just, um, people at home, to zoom back out in for us and the board. Uh, compensation, uh, information came out of teachers across the country. And this year, Washington State is second highest in the country, according to the NEA, just behind California, which I guess shows a couple of things. One, that teachers are well-paid here. And two, that paying teachers well is not a guarantee of success, as California shows. Um, we just approved a three-year contract in September. There's a question, I think if we adequately, as a board, understood what those trade-offs were baked in to that contract. Um, and, and I think there's a real question there. Um, and sometimes like, you know, David Foster Wallace, one of the most famous commencement speeches is, this is water. When everyone else is driving off a cliff, maybe you drive off a cliff and you don't ask the right questions. And of course, that's my view of what this town hall in November was. Um, I think we do need to make, you know, we need to ask, sustainability is recognizing we live in a world of finite resources. That is true environmentally, that's true fiscally, that entails trade-offs. And we need to understand if the compensation trade-offs, if that's coming to the cost of classes, are we making the right trade-offs? If we are funding, um, you know, certain, you know, individuals and understand that can be very beneficial to them, but hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, but can't provide nurses and, and librarians for hundreds of other students, that's a trade-off. And we just need to be clear-eyed of what the trade-offs are. I mean, that's the real world. We don't live in a fantasy world, we live in a real world, and governing is looking clear-eyed at what the trade-offs are inaccurately, and then having a discussion and making a decision, going forward and then revisiting it.
Um, I'm wondering, Fred, if you can remind me, weren't, didn't we either have a discussion or take a vote or come to consensus or something a couple board meetings ago, where we said that we could ease off our payment of fund balance to, to try to, to ease the pressure on our budget?
Yeah, those were, well, in, and it was, I'd have to go back to which board meeting, but yes, we were talking about in the, in the OE with respect to how quickly are we going to accelerate it or not, which is why we landed where we did. Um, so I took that information back to this department. which is why we're not going to be at 5.5%, which is why we're going to be between the 4.5% and 5%.
So I feel like, I mean, I appreciate everyone's concern here. Or I appreciate the point that Christina is raising. But we had, we had a discussion about this, you know, not so long ago, where we said, like, you know, that this is a choice we're actively making. So like, to not push our budget area to read pay the fund balances, you know, as faster. And then, so I just want to make sure that we're not giving mixed messages to our budget team when we say, by the way, can you now repay the fund balance faster? Or, you know, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're all, that we remember that we had this conversation a few meetings ago. And obviously, this is an area that sparks robust conversation.
Who's the April 24th board meeting?
Okay.
Actually, this document.
Oh, Matt.
Yes.
That's the reason this conversation feels familiar.
I would love to be nice with some, and then Christina, and then I would love that we can kind of, oh, it was, sorry, Ava. And then I would love that we could kind of plan up for that. I just want to say that I have confidence in our finance team. And that since both, well, I'm not going to speak endeavors behalf, but I endeavor have had the experience of now living through a rainy day season and having to use, you know, the general fund balance, like a chunk of it, to prioritize our students to, okay, all of it, to prioritize our students to keep our school, you know, to get our schools back open during COVID, to keep providing services, you know, to, like, that was a deliberate decision made by the board at that time to spend down to do what a lot of other districts weren't able to do in terms of, like, getting elementary school students back in, in terms of, you know, like, getting our classes back up and running. So we, you know, the board can only make sort of decisions at the point in time that it's at. Each board, with whatever composition it has, you know, every year, as the budget comes up, has to kind of like set these priorities. And like, yes, we're building it fastly, but I really appreciate the effort that has gone into the building back process this year. And I personally feel comfortable with kind of, you know, obviously, it would be great to have it be higher sooner, right? And maybe that'll happen, and maybe it won't. But like, I feel confident that we will get back to where we want to get. And that we are at least in much better shape than many of our neighboring districts who, you know, are going into, it's not receivership, but you know what I mean? Like, finding conditions, like, we're far away from that. So that's all I have to say. And then Christina, and then Ava, you want to go first?
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to say, like, yeah, like, thinking about the importance of, like, the short-term is definitely important because I think it ultimately impacts the long-term. Like, if we were to cut, like, to six periods, for example, I feel like less people would be attracted to COVID than that, or the enrollment, for example, down the road. So, yeah, yeah, that's just like, why do you say, I mean, no.
Thank you, Christina.
So just want to ensure that, I think that I have always said that I do trust what you're doing. So making sure that that is on the table. And when I said, let's review, it is meant, there was an expectation with the previous board that I would have, and it is reflected here. That it said that we have to achieve what is a 5% to 6% balance. So it is in the document, so we do have either to change that to reflect what we're actually achieving or make changes to our budget. We cannot have it both ways. And by deep, going deep, is having that conversation with real numbers, real solutions. Say like, okay, let's say, are we cutting this portion of the school? Or are we cutting this portion of whatever? Would that make sense or not to achieve the balance? Or are we just lowering the percentage? So I think that we just have to be clear on that, and that is, the numbers will be reflected. And that's what I meant. This conversation, I think, that needs to have happened in the study session because these are, will be, it will come with a lot of questions on what can we, or what are we willing to trade? And sometimes might be difficult things that might say, well, during a certain period of time, we might have to cut your programs to some, sometimes might not. Maybe it's the opposite, we won't protect, we might have to cut. But it is important, the real flat book we're saying with what we're showing. And that's pretty much what I'm trying to achieve here, so.
All right. All right, on to page 24 and 25. This is the 25-26 Budget Resolution, number 744. First reading on Monday, the 16th. Obviously, there's plenty of wherashes that are required via state law and via further result. This is reviewed about every other year from external counsel. My apologies to Executive Director Battersby. Typically, Foster Garden runs through this to make sure that we are current with all required RCWs, et cetera, and services that are needed in this. The appropriation level is at the bottom for the General Fund, Capital Debt Service, ASB, and Transportation Fund. And those numbers obviously match throughout the document we've been previously discussing. On page 26, we have the FTE and General Fund Budget Summary. 27 and 28 were presented by Executive Director Battersby and her team at the May 8th meeting and walked through classified FTE by activity and certified FTE by activity. I don't think there are any changes to those two pages, those two documents at this time. And on to page 29, revenues to support operations.
Yeah, we're looking at, this is a comparison of our budget to budget, so from 24 to 25, 25 to 26. Our local taxes are up just a little over, or up just a little, 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 little bit. And our local support is going down 6.21%. And that's because we're going to be using less of our capital projects funds in transferring capacity of that for salaries and benefits. We're looking at a 3.69% increase from the state for their adjustments that they've done for school districts. And in our special purpose revenue, due to the CPI increase for the state, that's their way for special ed, that's why we're seeing an increase in there. And in our federal grant area, we're looking at a decrease. We are not, our capacity has been reduced for possible safety net funding as well as our other grants that we're anticipating for this next year.
On to page 30, we have enrollment. 25 to 26, or 31, 25 to 26, summer projected enrollment FTE. And then below is historical and projected student enrollment average by FTE, which gives a little glimpse from 2012 to 2013 until present.
Just one comment, one question raised. One is that the question is, how did this compare to Davis Model 2? And then I guess the one comment is, I think we're now coming up on two years, I think.
Yes.
Right? This November. So if we want to consider, as a board, an update, I mean, that'd be a little bit early, but it's not that expensive if we just did one. Anyway, just something to put on the radar, the time has a way of passing.
I'm glad you brought that up, me and myself and Dr. Rendell discussed that. At what point do we bring both of them or one of them back to kind of update, refresh the demographics, so?
Yeah, I think that we will be at an inflection point. Do we do it this year or since? I think part of it might be, what do we learn from the survey from Strategies 360 about then when the next bond would potentially be considered? The sooner it would be considered, maybe it would necessitate doing one sooner. If it's going to be up further, maybe we wait a year. We can definitely have more of that. Those are things on our mind on that.
And would we want to do the two forms again or just one?
I guess, but by how many, it's like, I think the relative costs are pretty reasonable compared to some of the other fees. I mean, not that it's insignificant, I mean, so like mine would be a couple. But I think this year and another year, like, I think, you know, one or the other, I don't think it's fair to that. Just in.
And on to Davis 2, on Monday, I'm going to give you an enrollment update. And I just made a note to do a quick overlay on the Davis 2 for that.
Okay.
And that is the 25-26 Budget Summary. Okay, so the first year of resolution will be Monday, the 16th. And then hearing and budget adoption on the 26th.
Good, thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, team.
So we're putting this on the agenda?
It will, it will come back, actually, as an agenda item. We will come back with updates based, like, we all took notes on what you discussed. We'll make updates. We will then go over those updates. You might have had a chance to think about other things. We have another chance to have a conversation. And so, and then it will come up again, so this one doesn't go unconced.
Yes. The next item on our agenda is recognition, and we're a little bit ahead of.
One other item, we have a resolution.
Oh, whoops. I'm going to jump ahead to the fun part. Yeah, sorry.
That's fine.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Board Policy 1809, Communication and Support to the Board, Affirmation of Resolution Number 636, and Proposed Adoption of Resolution Number 745, Public Access to District Records Index. This is a first reading.
Great, I'll kind of lay out briefly the why, and then I'm going to turn it over to Director Battersby. There is, there's a long history going back to the 70s around access to public records and access to what's been called an index. When Director Battersby arrived 10 years ago, one of the very first things that she did in her first couple of months, when she looked at it, to say, why don't we have this resolution? Because it was what the resolution does, and it essentially, the board is notifying the community and allowing the district to not have to conform to undue requests, given this public records index. So she was the drafter of the original number 636. We've, this has come back up recently because of First Amendment audits. And I explained a little bit about that in your board reports. Most recently, over on the Kitsap Peninsula is where they're seeing these First Amendment audits, where people are coming in demanding to see these, these records. And if we have a resolution on hand, then we have the reason why we're not retaining these voluminous records. So 10 years, a lot has changed, and so.
Can I just ask, First Amendment, is this just what they're titling themselves?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it has nothing to do with our.
No, no, yeah, they titled themselves this, yeah. And they film on video, and they're trying to get a big reaction. And the bigger reaction that they get, the more, then they put that up on YouTube, and then the more reactions they receive on that. And so if we can minimize our reaction by having documents like this that affirm that we don't need to retain for public inspection these huge amounts of records, it can potentially help to diffuse situations. And so we're looking for, do we affirm the resolution that was passed in 2015? And then we'd like to contemplate updates to that based on 10 years of learning from there. So take your question, and then I'll give it over to Director Battersby.
Question, are you just talking about the index of the requests themselves or the underlying records or both?
A quick segue.
It's a little bit, so what you asked, from what I've heard, is the index of the public records request. So we have a log, a public records log, we never heard it was an index. This does not govern that law. The statute itself, which is RCW 42.56.070, is basically that you would create an index of public records. So someone can come in and look at an index and decide, like, what public records do you have? So then it would aid them, this is my theory. It's not written in the statute necessarily, but it would facilitate them requesting records. At this point, the statute also contemplates that that could be unduly burdensome for an agency, just given the volume and diversity of actual public records. And so it says, if that's not reasonable, basically, you can, you don't need to maintain such an index of the public records themselves, not the requests, the records themselves, if it's unduly burdensome. But in that event, you have to publish a formal order, which could be a resolution, specifying the reason why and the extent to which your compliance would be unduly burdensome. So, for example, correspondence, like, an index of all our correspondence at this point in time is just not reasonable, given the volume of emails and that type of thing.
So this isn't the log that, okay, got it.
So this is just indexed, nothing, and we try to make very clear.
So it's like, we're like, all like, all bus records, or I don't know. Like, I mean, just like, you know, like, that's a public record, I want to see it, like, give it to you.
You can still make the request, we just don't have that.
Yeah, 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 exactly, like, saying, like, I want it indexed, like.
Yeah. So nothing about this, we still have to comply, and we're still saying we will comply with public records requests. Like, if you ask and come for bus manifestos or whatever it happens to be, we would still comply. We would process them consistent with the Public Records Act. And just saying, we're not going to maintain an index, at least because it's too dynamic. It changes all the time, it's just unduly burdensome.
It would also be inaccurate, correct?
Yeah, I guess my thought is, it seems reasonable, just because of my confusion about the log. Like, maybe if there's like some clarifying, you know, just saying, notwithstanding or for the avoidance of doubt, I mean, just something, making clear that it doesn't affect that public record log, because that's how I first read it, that we were no longer publishing the index of requests, not the records themselves. And I was like, well, why are we doing that? That doesn't seem that.
Yeah, this won't govern your OEs on that, which, what we report to you every December, I think it is, on that. This does not override that, so we want to make sure that that's clear.
As long as that's clear, I just remind, like, it seems reasonable, otherwise, I just had that one question.
And this is just a resatement of what the prior board agreed to. And it's just, in light of, the topic came up because of other things going on in the broader community and the state of Washington. And so we felt like it was reasonable to look at, is it even possible for us to do the records, given the advancement in AI, et cetera? Could we do something? And realistically, it's just still too hard. But we did make efforts to make it more clear in the resolution itself that we will be complying with records requests. This isn't intended to limit people's access to records, to just say, we're not going to make this index that we really, realistically can't do.
But they will have a record of the records requests.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because we maintain that on our own.
Yeah.
Yep. So the ask is that there is, my request is that there is an affirmation vote of the previous resolution today. And then you have the choice as to whether or not you want to take action on the second resolution, which is the updated, or put that on to next meeting, for the upcoming action.
So I'm certainly happy to affirm the previous, the previous resolution. I'm happy to vote today on the updated resolution. Unless, even if we want to, if you want to add something down to make super clear that this isn't referring to the records release log, although I think it is clear because it says at the beginning. I appreciate the question for clarification, but one's called index and one's called log. So, I mean, confirming that that's our understanding, I think is.
We could put it into the board brief section to make sure that when you pass this, that it's just a quick sentence into the board brief, so you don't have to change the resolution.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's my stupid.
Great.
I move that we affirm Previous Board Resolution 636.
Second.
All in favor of affirming Resolution Number 636, please say aye, students.
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's 2-0, 5-0.
I move that we approve Resolutions Number 745.
Second. All in favor of approving Resolution Number 745, please say aye, students.
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Any names? Any abstentions? Okay, 2-0, 5-0.
Thanks for the quick work on this, Director Battersby, and we turned this around given the context of things that are happening, so thank you.
Yes. Okay, now, the fun part of the meeting. For recognition today, you don't have any, like, groups of students coming, right? I didn't see anything on the agenda. Okay, great, so we can do it a little bit ahead of schedule. Can we, Fred?
Sure, I'll start off with just some monthly announcements. We have LGBTQ plus Pride Month, and I know the city has an event that they're planning. And then we also have Juneteenth coming up on the 19th. And many of our students have been involved in planning an event here in the city for that as well. And so both of those days. And then we also have Eid coming up for those of you, for those who are of the Muslim faith. And so a couple of recognitions for members of our community. Now, we also have some recognitions that we would like to do as we kind of start to wrap up the year. This is Ava's last board meeting on Monday. Hopefully, she won't be here, and she'll be on a bus heading for the venue while we're having our session. But we do want to take some time there. But before I do that, I'm going to start with Steph Boyer, if you can, come on up, Steph. Steph's been filling in as an outside support as a wellness coordinator for our school district. And some of you may or may not know that Steph and I first worked that together down in Lakewood when she was coming back from California and looking for, you know, her place. And she's always been drawn to this community. And so she was a parent educator. And so, she was a parent educator, and then has gone on, and obviously is a director in one of our preschools, and has a big impact in our community. But this year, in addition to the things that she does for administrators in schools, she's been orchestrating our dinners throughout the year and helping us out there. And so, one of her praises that she brought to us, and that she'll send me some quick notes every now and then is, "I'm behind you and I'm backing you up." And so, this year, Steph, we have the Backing You Up Award, which is going to you as a small way of just saying thanks for helping us out, one less thing for us to do. But being able to coordinate that and having meals in these long meetings has really helped out a lot. So, I'll allow other folks to say, but we have an important year, so thank you.
These flowers are from the board, coordinated by Stephanie. And apart from the board, and we are just, I will speak for myself, I am very grateful for your support this year and for the meals, which made all the difference in difficult days. Difficult meetings, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't know Steph before she started the board meetings this year. And just, I just want to thank you for your support and let you know the impact that you've made on me. And I think on the entire community, the way in which you've jumped in, at least in mine, you've jumped in, but you've been there clearly, and had an impact, just like, you're a doer. You put your money, time, where your mouth is, and come and engage and build relationships. And, you know, yes, the food is awesome. But also, just the looks and showing of support with you being in the room. And, you know, we have some really difficult conversations in here, and to know that there's, you know, just, to know that you're there, it's really, it's relief and added benefit. And I really enjoy getting to know you, canvassing and fundraising and all sorts of things. But I just, thank you. That one person can make a huge impact on our community. And you have, and you do, and I know that you will continue to. So, thank you for being a part of our community and supporting us.
I'm Dino, but thank you so much. Absolutely, and thank you for being here and grounding us, we needed to be. And the support not only for us, but also, I think, that for the whole staff. Having, these are very long meetings, and they'll be, we're only gene or two. So, thank you for everything, so thanks very much. You're a rock.
We need more stability in society, and I feel like the rituals, whether it's eating, making music, dancing, helps impart that in a time when it seems like everything is coming apart. So, thank you for the food. If we were angry, it'd be even... Thank you for reminding everyone of the importance of food and stability.
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, like, we could not have gotten through, last year I caught these delicious dinners, and of course, like, the little treats that are, like, rewarding us in some, as we get through meetings. And then having you in the eye line to face eye contact with, it's been fantastic, you can never stop.
No pressure, or no computer prints to hold yourself right into, like, food, right?
The angry board member theory actually explains a lot about how it's here.
Thank you so much for always being there and for being like a person to talk to as well, and like, reaching out to the students, too.
Yeah, definitely, and thank you so much for the food, too. Like, it's like so nice here, the normal board meeting, it's like gourmet food, it's really good, so thank you so much.
Well, this is unexpected. So, thank you for taking the time to affirm it. Really, the meals came kind of by happenstance. So, doing this wellness work and kind of like, okay, what's going on with the board meetings? And coming and realizing how much time. And so, as a, someone who has been in education and, but still not getting the full glimpse of how much time and energy, emotional, mentally, goes into not just showing up to the board meeting, but showing up to the board meeting and reading all of the documents for everyone in this room. And so, when I, you know, food is always, I mean, with kids, like, when it goes in the test day, like, we're constantly talking about from the earliest ages, making sure that they are having their brain food, and they're moving their bodies, and carrying their stuffs. And so, that just seemed like a natural, like, what is happening? And then apparently, that was cut in different years of budget things. And so, I just thought it was a really simple way, actually, to get our community involved. And so, at first, I was like, okay, I'm just going to put an ask out to some different people in the community. And we ended up with a team of about fifteen people who, after making dinners, are like, keep me on this list. And so, it didn't really need to expand more because the people who said yes, and these are middle schoolers, high schoolers, current parents, alumni parents who are empty nesters and not involved in the district, former board parents or members, directors. So, the sprinkling of who is showing up for you. So I'm just one person that we're representative. From all the voices that you hear at public comment and all the emails that you get, there are also so many voices who are championing you. And so, I'm glad that that is felt and that has been an encouragement.
Thank you, Steph. And then we've come to the time of being able to express our appreciation for you, Ava. And all of us will have a chance to say a few things. And I'll just start with, we've had a unique opportunity to watch different dynamics unfold between student board reps. And Director Lur, you oftentimes talked about the evolution of how it's changed over time. And just when you think, wow, that duo did something, how was the next duo going to top that? Or what are they going to do? You, as students, continue to innovate, and you continued with that. Recognition for you is not just what you've done here, but also what you've done with your other board reps and being nominated to that leadership role with WASTA, where you're reaching out now and trying to help other board reps. How you've tried to help others find their voice on boards where their voice is not as prevalent in the conversations. And you've done coaching and mentoring. So it's been both other school boards that have benefited from your leadership, but this school board, and you've been a great mentor for Lucy. The two of you did an outstanding job this year leading with me the superintendent student advisory and putting forth, you know, some things that are going to last on. I know there's already work in the works, New Student Welcome Day, that you two started off, and it's going to continue. So, you know, the University of Chicago is in great hands with you on your way there. And just want to thank you for everything that you poured into this and what you've sacrificed to do it. Because there's things that you probably didn't get to do as a high school student because of this, but it's made a difference, so thank you.
I'm going to just say, I've said it before, you guys somehow amazingly get better every year, and this is no exception. And you're just going to take, you know, University of Chicago by storm and whatever future, you know, industry you're going to go into. So I hope you'll stay in touch with me and other board members, because it'll be great to see what you do next. Thank you for everything this year.
I just think you've done a fantastic job. Like, your leadership, especially where I've seen it, particularly because I've been lead rep, has been like, you're very willing and very aggressive, but in a good way, participation in the legislative process. You were the one who spearheaded bringing outside students down to lobby and to talk to our representatives instead of just the board members going and talking, which I think is like such a fantastic improvement. You know, obviously, it was like a fantastic improvement for our elected representatives, who really appreciated hearing that student voice. I think that it is, you have really taken more initiative than I've ever seen a student take before in that sort of like leadership role of just like, let's do this way, let's try this way. And because it's backed up by your willingness to put in a lot of time. I mean, you know, we would get like a text from you, and, you know, Christina and I were organizing some legislative thing, and we get a text from you like on a Sunday night or whatever, and you're like, what about, you know, can you help on a call now? Or whatever, and we're just like, she won't stop. You know, she's like, she's like, you're going to tell her some money. Organizing. And I think that's reflected in the quality of what you guys have achieved this year, like you and Lucy. But that, you know, you're really just like a real certain leader in your role of like, just doing the best for the board and the best for the students.
And I just want to jump back in to say, and the things that you've done are not at all prescribed. Like, when I think about what I was like as a leader-ish, you know, leader-ish lady in high school, like, I did Model UN, which was a thing where, you know, it's like a set, a set series of tasks you do. It's written out for you. It's like, this is the role of the student leader in the Model UN group when they go to Model UN, right? The stuff you're doing, you're just doing it like a full-on adult, you know, functioning human politician. So, it's really, it's doubly impressive, right, that you've taken the kind of initiative that you have. Sorry.
Yeah, so I applaud and I'm amazed by your energy and stamina. And any student who can sit through a six-hour board meeting, it's impressive, and few adults can, as well as all the other activities and studies that you do. One thing that I really appreciate that I hope leaves a lasting impact is what you've gained from providing the board updates. I think board updates, what you have perhaps uniquely in your role as a student representative is the insights into a broad community of four thousand students. And you see the diversity of interests and perspectives from kindergartners, fellow seniors, and wherever you go in life, whether that's, you know, next year onto college, or in a corporation, or in academia, you'll be a member of the community. And hopefully, listening and interacting with many members of our school community has prepared you up.
It's so hard to say anything after they have said a lot. But I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to have worked with you. I saw you kind of blossom from junior rep to senior, and I'm amazed of how much you have done so. And at the same time, I'm sure that it's not even like a minimal part of how you're going to blossom as a leader in the future. So I'm actually looking forward to follow your career and whatever you're going to do, because I'm sure that you'll take this experience and expand it to the next level. And knowing you, you know that you will achieve so many things. And you're a competent leader. So, I mean, we hope to see you in November, if we are excited on the task, so... But anyway, I wish you keep in contact with us. Definitely wish you have your career every other week.
No. No, I just want to kind of highlight something that, you know, I know everyone thinks. But, you know, watching the progression of, you know, the big, the, of all student directors, I mean, it's been a privilege. And I do every year, it's like, oh, what are they going to do now? Like, how are they going to top this? Or do something, not that it needs to be better, but different? How are they going to make it their own? And you guys, as a whole, continue to amaze me in that you do, you really, really do. But one thing I want to talk about with you is your demeanor in all of it. Is, you know, I know you're joking around, well, sort of joking around with the University of Chicago, where fun goes to die, right? You bring that joy and compassion to everything you do. And it's been really fun and a great reminder that, you know, that that little bit goes such a long way. And we can look at things and be joyful about them, or we can look at things and be angry about them. And it's still looking at them, but it's all, you know, the way that it's reflected. So, I hope my point is coming across. Your leadership style and your understanding, compassion, and joy you're going to bring to that fun wherever you go and you have for us, or at least for me, you've brought that fun. It's like, we see it in your board reports, the fun, and you're proud of our, of your fellow students and in our community, and it comes across. And it is such a great reminder, it's such a gift. And I hope that you recognize that and that you continue to be able to bring that gift in everything that you do. I don't even have to say, I know you're going to succeed. That everything that everyone has said, I agree. And, you know, it's hard, you guys are on, your students are under a lot of pressure, and you just, you handle it with a smile. And just, good luck and wish you the best. And I know that I'll see you at times, so, good luck. Thank you for everything that you've done for us and the board community.
Well, Lucy, you get to go, and then the final word is Ava's.
Yeah, I think for me, like, the best part of this role, I don't think I really thought about before, was like, having Ava as like a mentor. And I think you've been like an amazing mentor for me. I think the biggest thing I admire from working with you is like, she's like the biggest like role getter attitude I've ever seen. Like, I think if you decide to like, do you want to do something? You just do it. And I think that's like so inspiring, and like, it's just an amazing thing. I feel like, especially like, for me, I've learned a lot. Like, oh, you can just do a thing, and you can be confident in yourself that it's a good idea. And you always work the hardest to make an idea that will come to fruition and come to like the best fruition that they can. I think that's, it's inspiring, and it's really amazing just how much, how hard you work on the things that you want to do and the amount of time and dedication you put into this role. Like, it's really inspired me, like, I have to put in just as much time later. And it's, it's just been amazing working with you and just seeing the amount of energy and time you put into the role. I'm really going to miss you in Chicago, because you've been such an amazing person to work with.
Okay. Oh, wait, I have stuff to say, too. Um, okay, wait, I'm like choked up now, guys. Okay.
There's nothing worse than having to sit while people say nice things.
Yeah, there is.
I'm going to say one thing worse.
Well...
Almost mine.
Okay, yeah, I'll just say that, like, these past two years have been like some of the most exciting years of my life. And it's like, become like a core memory that I'm just going to take on, like, for the rest of my life. And, um, what, okay. And since my first meeting, where I fearfully walked into this intimidating room of adults, I felt a lot of imposter syndrome. And I feel like I've really learned how to... Sorry. Guys, this is like... What if I feel like this? Okay, um, and I feel like I've really learned how to like, um, speak up more, and I've met a lot of amazing people, had amazing experiences, and I wouldn't be who I am without everything. Yeah, and I'm, sorry. And I'm really thankful for mentors like you all and Dr. Rundle and Wold. Sorry, I'm crying because it's like patented. I think about this like every day I go to bed. Okay, sorry. And, um, this is not even, I can't really read these notes anymore because like, there's so much feeling, and I can't express it in words. But I feel like through this position, I've been provided like a stage that not a lot of people have. And I really appreciate like the way the board, the staff, everyone is able to accept, like amplify my voice. And I really strive to amplify the voices of others as well. And I felt more empowered than I've ever been before. And I'm confident that the district will continue to have student voice as a core value for years to come and continue like putting students up on a pedestal for them to speak up. And I couldn't be more grateful for this district and all the people that I've, amazing people that have gone to me. And I really learned about how to like lead through conversing with others. And like, like I definitely say like before, as like an introvert, it's like hard for me to kind of say what I actually wanna say. And I think I've really learned how to do that more, especially through conversing with people I represent and like getting closer with the student body. And from bringing the board into the high school for informational panels, to working on advisory committees and then like starting the rep Instagram, things like that, no day has been the same and that really excited me. And I'm really gonna miss seeing you guys all at all the board meetings, even though like they're really long, a lot of endurance.
Remember they're live. You can tune in.
Exactly. And I remember when I first, when I first got this vision, like Asha warned me that I'd become a, I would become a school board rep nerd soon. And let's just say that I did because at the beginning I was like, what is this? Like, how do you enjoy sitting at meetings? But it's become, it's like really exciting and I'm gonna be remembering this like on my deathbed. I'll be like, wow, I'm a student rep, you know?
So, a student rep for life.
It has taken over my life, but I'm just so like grateful, especially to be in this district because I feel like a lot of students don't have student voice like MI does. And MI is truly a special place that has prepared me for the real world. And I'm so blessed to have you guys and I like love everyone here. And I think MI provides an unparalleled education and has been literally a core memory. And I also, often I talked about this in the past, but I made like these like croneck things that are like passed down with like a senior rep and junior rep. So, here you go, Lucy, this is where it's at. And I have brogies, like you just junior rep one and you guys can pass it down now. So.
Thank you all for a great student rep experience. And I'll definitely be emailing back a lot. So.
Wonderful.
So we have certificate and then we do need to do one last picture with the board. And so this time, you get to stand behind the board and be there, but there is a certificate.
Wanna do Lucy's first or Ava?
Yeah, Lucy's first.
Let's do Lucy first and then do a picture.
Oh, that's right. Yes. Oh, yeah, we have a birthday. So. We had a birthday last weekend with Lucy on Sunday 8th, right? So, happy birthday, Lucy. We have something for you on behalf of the board. And hope that you had a great birthday preparing for finals and the end of your term. Although most of yours are done because I know you took a lot of AP tests. So.
Yes, I've gone through that before. So, it's nice.
So, yeah.
Thank you all so much.
So, happy birthday.
I'm scared of us singing.
So, are you ready, Ian?
Yeah.
Get the t-shirts on.
T-shirts on.
What's that? Well, Deuce, what's that? And then Steph.
Well, I'm standing in the front.
Yeah.
Someone get the table that way.
Gotta kick it all school, Ann.
What's that?
Well, that way you're closer and there's the blue ones behind you.
No, I think he just meant, you know, you're okay with this. I meant those tables behind them that are closer and tighter. You, uh, you have to be in the center. Yeah.
It's a roar in his white car. I couldn't come up with the name of it. We see where your hair is. Well.
No, you're so, this is your last, your last. If you do wear the backwards, that one.
No, you won't be able to read it. You won't be able to read it.
Yeah.
Okay, you guys in the center. Okay, we're in the center.
Well, we're on balance.
We need one more on this side. One more character on this side. There. We're balanced. Yeah, so that looks a little better. Okay. Okay. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Okay. All right, Steph, join the board. Go ahead, turn around. Three, three, two, one. Okay. And now we're getting Steph in there. It takes center of all of you. Steph in the center. Steph in the middle. Does she have a?
A plaque?
Do you have a plaque, certificate?
Yeah, over there.
So this, that way we can put it in the center and give it an idea. Okay, three, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you, everyone. Absolutely. The next item we have is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I moved. There'll be a group consent agenda.
All in favor of reviewing the consent agenda, please say aye, students.
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Any names, any abstentions? That is 2050. We have no items for motion for consent agenda. Superintendent report unannounced.
Just two things. One is, we'll see everyone here for the study session at noon on Monday, followed by a meal together and then we'll load on the buses and head down to McCall, McCaw Hall for graduation. Everything is pretty much the same as we've had in the past in terms of that. And so Lucy, we'll see you. Are you gonna write with us or are you gonna go down on the road?
I'll write.
Perfect. So we'll see everyone there. And then the other thing is, if I may, leave right after this announcement because I've got my daughter's graduation party tonight and she graduates from Isco High School tomorrow. So I will be in district just till about 10 o'clock and then I'll be out the rest of the day tomorrow.
Great. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Legislative report. Board announcements, inquiries, and reports. Start in Deborah.
Just super quick, PTA council meeting last week where, I'm trying to think if there was anything else. Dave Rosenbaum and the city operations. Jason. Jason.
Jason.
Jason. Jason. Thank you. Talked about the potential upcoming city bond for the public safety buildings so that they're starting to kind of talk about what they're doing. So I think we can all empathize with the process they're now going through. So that's, he presented to PTA council on that. And then also yesterday was at the middle, the final middle school PAC meeting, their tier one meeting. So they've done a really unique thing, changed it up this year. It's kind of a combo, not combo, a combination of what most elementary schools do in terms of providing information to parents and then also what like the high school tends to do, which is probably presenting kind of things that are happening and then getting feedback on that. So it's kind of been a combo in that. So it's been a really great opportunity to watch the inner workings. And they're really looking at what was successful about that process and what wasn't and what to keep and what to change. So that's what, it's a great team to participate on. So I encourage whoever is looking for a new experience to look at that. And it's, anyways, a lot of parent participation and a lot of staff participation. So those are the things I've done.
So I first went to the superintendent equity advisory council. And it was more sharing on how, well, the school will have during spring and summer for students from CLU to assess some equity data across the district and they will support the district in that sense with the partnership they have with CLU. And it was mostly talking about the four Vs that will be broadcasting various and the logging, like seeing what is, it's seen across the district regarding those four and what is missing regarding data and. So a lot of conversation regarding that. And then we had, I went to the PTA advocacy meeting and they're starting to focus more on their meeting with legislators in the summer and will meet with us during the summer to see if our priorities will match. We are just starting with the precautions, so we do not have our legislative priorities for next year. So we will just have conversations of where they are and if there's something that we are aligning at this moment. And also the conversation was around the, what is it? The flock cameras about the city is serving the possibility to implement in the city or not and the concerns that they have.
What is that?
Implementing the flock cameras. I think that it's.
Flock, like a flock of birds. I think it identifies license plates and then runs it through like known like stolen E-type rules. Like, I think Medina has it implemented and Daniel Becker has been championing it. But like suppose, I guess like Medina's had a lot of success with it.
I see. I understand. Okay, I just didn't know what they were called.
So I would say that there's, there were conversations regarding that and transparency in the company of how data is shared and the protection of the power alignment for the citizens. So it was, the conversation just sort of wrapped there pretty much. So, and last but not least, I went to the percussion concert last Friday from the high school. And I think that it was amazing. Everybody should go every year. Really outstanding students. And I have a Westmerchip PAC now. So Paul, Lucy's just getting a joint that will play it. Yes, pretty much.
For me, no official committee to report on. I did go to VanBlast yesterday for the fifth grade in middle school, which is always exciting to see the progression from grade to grade. And the features of the various like instruments, I think is good to hear it. But then also, so students, I think, prepare knowing that they will be highlighted when their instrument is featured. And then there was also a nice but perhaps lengthy ceremony for Mr. Bentley at the end. But I guess short compared to his 37 years in the district. It was very nice.
I had the pleasure along with Christina of going to the staff recognition event for the district, which was recognizing staff from the, as you could no doubt glean from the name. And also people who have been various retirement milestones and people are retiring. And it's always inspiring to see the impact that our staff and our educators have had on our students and on each other. So that was really delightful. And then I went to jazz concerts, which had not yet featured at the Benty Fest. So, you know, it's shorter at the end. And also the jazz ensemble played at Triple Door, Jazz Club in Seattle, which was super fun along with the Buffalo High School Jazz Ensemble. And a guest trumpeter from the Lincoln Center Jazz Group, whose name is a secret.
A secret from yourself. A secret from my memory at this moment.
Great. I'm sure I attended more meetings than this, but the only thing that was popping into my head is I attended the last meeting slash training session of the former PTA DEI committee, which is now known as the Belonging and Voice Committee. But we wrapped up, it was like a three-part training with some outside trainers who were from, you're in, I wanna say. Just fantastic. Like really, really, we all like learned a lot about each other. It was a really good, it was a really good exercise basically to go through, especially at a time of kind of redefining the name of the group and kind of like the whole, you know, in some senses, the whole mission of like what, you know, like what does belonging and voice mean? Does it encompass the entire agenda of the previous group? Is it different? You know, very helpful. And it sounds like most of that committee is gonna continue on to next year, which is like, which is nice to have that much continuity from year to year because you don't always get that in these PTA type committees. That was it? So, also just a reminder to everyone that Crest Graduation is this Friday from, I'm gonna say 10:30, 10:30 to 12, 10:30 to 12:30, something like that. And then there's a barbecue at Crest afterwards. And if you have never, if you're a board member and you have never been to Crest Graduation, it is so worth going. Like I try to go every year. This year I just had a medical appointment, moved to smack in the middle bit. So I'm not gonna be able to go this year, but it's really worth going. It's a very special, it's a very special program slash place slash group of people. And the graduation is so kind of, is so personalized to every student and their strengths and what they've learned. And that's really just my thought for it. That's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move?
All in favor of adjournings? Please say aye, students.
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
2050, motion. Thank you.
Thanks. I just thought. And there's donuts for Lucy's birthday.
Oh, no.
Well, for everyone.